Oh, Joel's here today. Especially if we have an unruly crowd, because he can tame it down himself.
Yeah.
Until we...
We can just break the gavel back there. It's just a gavel at the end of it, yeah, and we'll stop it.
Well, we got the rules that we're gonna hold on today. You've seen those in the packet.
Yeah.
So, once we get those in place, that should be making it a lot easier.
I wonder if he meant Weesinger.
Who?
I wonder if he meant Weesinger. But Winger. I was looking at that. Troy's my brother-in-law's brother. He has a construction company in Ely. I'm just looking at who his other sources of references are. Maybe it is Winger, it could be.
Hello, Jim.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Jim.
Are we gonna be required to bulletproof vest for this thing?
Hmm?
Are we gonna be required to wear bulletproof vests for this thing? That's what they're gonna... Bulletproof vests.
Oh, yeah, I mean. I know, I thought, what would they do if I just wore... Because it's so safe in town, you know?
The higher private security for the...
She's running behind. It's four o'clock. Here's my... Here's my, uh, six or five.
My climate right there. Not necessarily in order.
I need...
There's six of them I wrote down. The one I liked the best, I put it here, okay?
Is there any post notes? Post notes, any post notes down there? I can write it right on the front page here. My favorite one was the guy that grew up on the farm.
I don't remember which one. Well, I did this when I was in Alaska.
Hmm?
I read through all of them.
How about the one that was part of the Pat Tillman Foundation?
There was a couple of them.
She and he had a real... I was looking back, I think that guy could help us market the city.
Is the mayor here?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Well, we need to have Dwayne start the meeting, then it's after four.
Yeah, can do that. We'll give her a couple of seconds here, get organized. Have you heard from her, Kirsten? Have you heard from her?
She said coming. A minute ago.
Okay. Any minute.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Okay, let's call the study session to order. Five, four, six. Um, no call, please. Counselor Lawson.
Here.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Counselor Lacy.
Here.
Mayor DePacito. Here, spice for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reason for the study session is the campground host applications and police department. So, let's... Let's start with that. So, the new business will be the campground. We'll start with that. Would anyone like to start?
I wasn't sure how we wanted to do it, Madam Mayor, so I just... Kind of like last time we did it, I picked like six, top six, to narrow it down. Um, if everybody's... I think maybe we could at least start there.
Yeah.
If everyone's okay with that.
Start with me, are you all here with that?
Yeah. I got my top five, but I didn't go to six.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's start with you, Jim.
Okay, I didn't, uh, I did not rank them, uh, one through five, but I did... These are the ones that I have down, applicant five. Eleven. Three. Eight. And four.
Okay. Okay. Um, John?
I think I got applicant eight. I don't know what the handwritten one number was, but I picked that one.
This is now number eight.
Hmm.
Manage this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's number eight.
Okay, number eight. Five, number three. And number eleven.
Need one more, John.
Eight, five, three, and eleven? So, that's four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Dwayne?
Um, I have four, seven, nine, eleven, and thirteen.
Oh. Okay. Joe?
I have the same as Jim. Five, eleven, three, eight, and four.
You're a real good picker, Joe.
Yeah. I thought that when I heard your numbers.
Uh-huh, that's funny. Okay, so five, eleven, three, eight, and four. Okay? I had three, four, five, eleven... Oh, I'm sorry, I was going in number order. Um, seven, eight, and eleven.
So, you picked six then?
Yeah, we had six at first, right? We can take four off, or I mean, seven off, the last one.
Six is okay.
So, okay. So, from there, that one there, it looks like...
Eleven is on every single one.
Mm-hmm.
Five is on... Four of them.
Mm-hmm. Three is on four of them. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Oh, there you go. Okay. All right, so the, um, the top ones are five, eleven, three, eight, and four. That is one, two...
That's fine.
One, two, three, four, five. Do we go with five or six? Didn't you say six at first?
Five is good.
I mean, five.
Five is good, five is... That's enough.
Okay.
Three...
Yeah, I think that's a good, uh...
Three, four, five, eight, eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yes. There you go. So, do you want to call them in for interviews then, or how do you feel? So, when is the next date that works for everyone?
I mean, I can do it from virtual if I'm not here, doesn't matter where you set it up. I'm here till the end of the month. So, I'll next week.
Okay. Who wants to start with availability?
I'm available all at... Man, it's on the end of the month.
Okay. Well, shall we see if they can come in next week, the... Start Monday, the twenty-seventh? Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Do we have another study, special study on Monday?
We've got something going Monday.
Yeah, at three-thirty.
Yeah.
So, should we do it at...
What is it? What is that?
I have...
Well, that's at, uh, SEDA.
Oh, the two-hour session.
So, they aren't going to be here tonight, SEDA?
We got something from five to seven, I think, isn't it, uh, Kirsten?
SEDA's coming next week. They wanted to do it a day that we didn't have other meetings.
Okay, so they're not gonna be here tonight, no.
They're not gonna be here tonight.
Oh, good. Perfect. Because...
And that is the twenty-eighth. Three-thirty on the... Or, sorry, five on the twenty-eighth.
Five on the twenty-eighth, so there's nothing on the twenty-seventh?
There is. That's the budget meeting, correct? Or not?
Hmm, whatever. Correct. Twenty-seventh at three-thirty.
Okay, is it five to seven? Okay, so we could do... We could do it. Sorry. We have calls coming through. So, um, three-thirty, we have the budget meeting. Do you want to... Do you want to do interviews right after the budget meeting?
See if the budget meeting's gonna take...
What day is it?
Monday, the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, as long as we're gonna be here, I'd... Yeah, it's good all the time.
I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so, we'll do that. Interviews. Interviews at four, oh, I don't... I don't... Should we say five? I mean, you think the...
You think an hour for the budget meeting, or...
Do you think we could do it?
I don't know, I guess I'm not sure. I think we're pretty...
I mean, worst-case scenario, you could recess the budget and reconvene after interviews is needed.
Yeah, we could do that. All right, let's say four-thirty then for the interviews. Does that work for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Campground. Okay. Okay, so, we got the campground host application, so now we have the police department. So, we need to figure out what we're gonna do. We have two... Well, we have one vacancy effective immediately, and then we have one that will be vacant on the thirty-first, it's his last day. So, we have reached out and, um, have... How do I call that?
They're called... They're called joint powers agreement for mutual short-term police officer staffing services agreements. I do have copies if you want to take a look at these. Um, there's one here for, um... This is the JPA with East Range Public Safety Board. And then I've got a second one. It's basically the same, I don't know if you wanna see it or not, um, with Ely. Ely is still considering, East Range is working on getting a... He's working to get his board together to get approval.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and Ely has to run it by, um... Ely has to run it by their council and everything too, but he seemed like it would be okay. So, there's, um, Ely, East Range, Evolip, right?
Yes, and I didn't have time to do one for Evolip to reach out to them, but I will get to them.
And then, and then Gilbert also. And so, and then St. Louis County will also assist. So, what we need to do is we fill in the schedule with the people that we have, and then, um, we can also reach out to the part-timers if they'd like to be on there. However, most of the part-timers do work for the other, um, departments. And then, we can send this schedule out to all the, um... To the joint powers agreements, and then they just kind of fill the blanks from there. Right?
Yeah.
That's what I fully understand.
The way these staffing agreements work is that basically the officers come from the other cities or districts. They come in their uniform with their equipment, they use our vehicles. We pay their employer for their time at a rate of one and a half. Um, so it's overtime rate. The question is whether or not we want to incent them uh, with... Especially for the East Range, because those officers are coming from anywhere from thirty to sixty minutes away. Do we want to compensate them for their travel time? Do we want to compensate them per mileage? And then, we have the other question about, we have... Some of our part-timers are from other districts. If they work part-time for us, they're going to be at their regular hourly rate, which is eighty percent of the full rate. Or if they sign up for shifts through their department, they're going to be getting time and a half. And so, we just want... What, what does council want to do with that? Or do we want to... For the interim, just some of the ideas that I've heard and have seen thrown out are, for the interim, increase our part-time rate to a hundred percent instead of the eighty percent, or let it be at their overtime rate with their employer.
So, a lot of stuff to, a lot of stuff to consider and, um, think about. And so, this is naturally nothing that was, um, thought about as would be happening or anything like that. So, that will also take the budget over, so... And, um, we have it posted, the police chief position was posted. Um, and then now is the other position posted now too? So, yeah, so we have the two of them posted. The thing is that there are... Correct me if I'm wrong, I think nine hundred positions open in the whole state and six hundred people just graduated. So...
And of the six hundred that are graduating, it's anticipated that only three hundred of them will actually pass the final and get their certs.
Mm-hmm.
So, for nine hundred jobs in this state, we're looking at a pool of three hundred applicants.
Yeah. How long was the other position, um, open last year? You guys, do you remember?
Hmm, I think we did ninety days, but we... He had them filled pretty quick, didn't he?
I think they were open for less than...
Was it sixty days?
It was either anywhere between thirty to... Maybe it was sixty days. I was on maternity leave when that happened, and that was a three-month span. And during that, I was gone for the vacancy and the hiring, so it was less than three months.
And he had, I think, what, three or four applicants?
Okay. Well, I guess we'll see what happens. Do you recall, um... Were they both vacant at the same time?
Yes.
I believe they were, yeah. He also, during that time, filled, uh, the temporary. I think he hired one more temporary officer as well. If I'm not mistaken.
What's temporary, is that...
The, the guys that just come in and fill in...
Part-time.
Part-time, yeah.
Oh, the part-timers?
I think we hired one more part-time at that same time as well.
How many part-timers do we have?
Three.
Okay. I'm, I know Troy got the, um, uh, open positions filled through the end of the month. So, and they do their scheduling a year in advance, right? So, um, once we get the agreements signed, then we can send out the... The holes, or how did... Did you talk to Todd? Do you know how he, you prefer to do it?
I have not. Um, we've got a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
With the, uh, three remaining officers.
Sure.
So that we can talk through scheduling, any logistics, any paperwork requirements, and basically how we can support them.
Okay.
So...
Well, this is one thing we should probably do is, uh, later on, when we appoint Todd as the interim, we should sit down and have a little discussion and find out what his thoughts are and how we can cover the shifts until we get them both filled.
Mm-hmm.
Because obviously, uh, we're gonna need to coordinate this, you know, between us and the PD.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's not a whole lot we can do right now.
Mm-mm.
You know, we're covered to the end of the month. Uh, beyond that, uh, that's where we gotta get together with Todd, figure things out. And then by then, we'd have some of these agreements in place, so...
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss? I mean, how do you feel about the incentives of changing... Changing to a hundred percent for the part-time mileage?
I think we should definitely give them a mileage.
Well, I guess I'm confused. I, I should have been paying better attention, but I don't see why the part-timers shouldn't have been getting full-time pay the whole time. That doesn't make any sense to me.
It's in their contract, the union contract.
Yeah. Uh, I would like to see that, they get paid as much as the officers that are doing the shifts, in my opinion.
Well, why don't we start with one increase at a time? Why don't we go to a hundred percent and pull the mileage off? I mean...
Yeah, I'm not in favor of the mileage. And I think the, the interim officers you're talking about, if we're paying them time and a half, most people that live around here commute to work anyway.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that'd be a hindrance.
Even though there's, there, there... Where they work might be that far from here. A lot of them can live twenty mi... You know? They, they have to commute to where they go already. Some of them probably live in town where they live, you know? But they could live out of town. Um, I guess I would... If we're gonna do one thing, that would just be, to me, I would think increasing the wage that as a... Something to try drive, to drive them here. To, to the one hundred percent.
The increase of the part-timer's wage would be for our, for the officers, our three part-time officers, moving them to a hundred percent. But if they are officers in one of our...
They'll be able to get the time and a half.
They'll be able to get the time and a half.
Yeah.
And we just, I wanna make sure that we've got clarity that when those people, if they pick up shifts, are they working under their part-time agreement for Babbitt, or are they working under their full-time agreement with their full-time employer?
Well, I think for right now, if, if that is the case, then I would be working for the higher wage, which would be the time and a half, which is fine for now. We're looking at short-term, not long-term. Eventually, we'll have our officers replaced, we'll have a new chief, and then we will still want those officers. And then we'll revert to full-time pay at that, we won't have to... So, you'll just have to track with them. When we do these agreements, are you coming as an agreement or as a city employee, I guess?
Okay.
We understand we're gonna take a hit, as Andrea already pointed out.
But if they do show up, like, for something that maybe they were scheduled for, for a part-time shift that was previously scheduled with the city of Babbitt, then are we increasing that eighty percent to a hundred percent for an interim period? Or does that stay eighty percent according to the contract?
I would say if they're already scheduled for that shift, we should just stay where we're at with that shift. I mean, they've already, they've already, um, committed to that, correct?
If they're scheduled.
Yeah.
I would assume so.
If they're scheduled and committed at that price, I think we should stay there. We shouldn't give anything away that we don't have to. I mean, we're going to have to, so we probably should save our bank until we need to. That's just my opinion.
Well, how many shifts are there? We don't, we don't even know that, do we?
No. No, if, 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 when we talk to Todd, we go back to the eight-hour... You know, there's some things we can do. We can look at the structure, how it was when Chief Lawan was here.
Yeah.
And he ran it with a four-person department. Um, and I suggest we maybe have a conversation with him. He might be able to help us out or whatever. I, I mean, just to give us, uh, some insight on what we're up against. Um, he's been here, done that. But, uh, they did eight-hour shifts with four people and did a, um... Well, you remember how they did. They did a Sunday afternoon, they did a Sunday day shift, it was off, so...
Yeah.
Yep.
We just gotta clear that through Joel, because we have a union contract with them right now.
Oh, we might not be able to...
I read all that.
We might not be able to go to...
They're contracted for the...
Oh, sure.
For the course hours.
You can't change right now.
We can change next fall.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-seven, but we can't.
And that's what we'll do.
Unless they are willing to do that, we can always ask and maybe offer up some different incentives to change the schedule for whatever, but that's gonna take them volunteering to do that and the union to support it if we make changes like that.
If they can go to their union with... There's a term for that.
Yep, MOU.
To change some sort of...
Get your MOU if it's possible, under these circumstances, I don't know what their...
But I think, like you said, Jim, we need to talk to them. And we need to talk to Todd before we can make any of these decisions.
Well, as part of the study sessions, we're able to talk this stuff out, so we'll see what we're, what we're thinking, what we're all thinking.
Yep.
Do we also need mutual aid agreements? Not staffing agreements, but also mutual aid, so that we have coverage in the event we have an unmanned shift.
You should talk to Todd about that. I would assume we already have mutual aid agreements already established. That shouldn't change because we're looking for a new chief.
Right, and also, Babbitt was going to Ely a lot, so...
We have mutual aid with Ely, I do, I do believe, but that needs to be verified.
It'll be updated when we get a new chief, it'll have to be his name on it. Um, those, those are already in place.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Well, we should look at scheduling a meeting with Todd to talk about this.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
We have that scheduled for tomorrow at six PM. It's just an informal discussion. Do you want... Are you suggesting that it's an entire council discussion?
We, we...
Or...
Too late for that.
Yeah, we can't do that.
We can't do that tomorrow, then, but...
Oh.
Do you wanna reschedule it? Do you still want us to have the informal discussion with him tomorrow?
I, I don't care if you have an informal, and you can probably bring things back to the council.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I would like to have the whole council involved on any policy decisions from either of you. And it's fine for you that you're gonna talk informally, so don't get me wrong on that.
It, it's, it's basically going to be a brainstorming session. It, it's, it's basically going to be a brainstorming session, um, what are all the things.
I think that's a good thing before we, before we, we'll, we'll, we'll have a better understanding after you guys do that.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, what, what are all the issues we need to think about and plan for when the vacancies hit?
That'll be beneficial.
Suggestions, recommendations, and then we'll bring it to council.
Yep. But we've gotta get it moving fairly quickly, you know, as quick as we can.
That's, that's why we wanted to start meeting with him tomorrow, right away.
Yeah, because we just found out two days ago?
Sunday.
Sunday night, yeah.
Yep.
We got a one-day notice?
Uh, no, it was just a few hours, I think.
I think it was a few hours.
Twenty minutes. So, um, all right, so that's kind of the plan and the pack. And then if we have to have a special meeting, because we don't have another council meeting until, where are we, September, October?
November.
November fourth. Yeah, so.
We could get a special sometime next week.
Mm-hmm. And then.
You know, if, if you, I think you're ready for, you know, to move on after you talk to Todd, and, and have something bring to the council, let's set up a meeting for next week sometime.
Well, and hopefully by that time, we'll also have, uh, firm answers from the East Range Board, from the city of Ely, and we'll also be able to talk to Gilbert and Evolith.
Sure.
And then the county. Come, yeah, county too, so. All right. Well, do we have anything else?
We might be, we might be able to wind it in to the twenty-seventh before the, we have two things going on on the twenty-seventh already.
That's gonna be
Tight.
Tight for me to get everything done, and to get, what I'd like to be able to do, if we do pull a special meeting, is have all of the agreements, so that you can look at them and approve them to be executed. So probably, more likely toward the end of this.
All right. Look for Thursday, before, before Halloween.
Yeah, Friday, I have, I have, uh.
Trick-or-treating after all this.
I have doctor appointments on Friday, so I'll be heading to Duluth.
Okay, so we'll.
At nine.
Shoot for Thursday.
But I'm free the rest of the week.
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to schedule it on Monday now, so by Monday, I should have a good idea that that is possible.
Tentatively plan Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, is there anything else, please, for like?
No.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by White, do we have a second?
Yep.
Second by Lassie, um, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meaning it's adjourned. We have a half-hour break.
You ready for a game of spear?
Yeah, let's go.
Joe?
I'm ready.